Morning. That is set. And I will share my screen with the agenda for you to go ahead and open us up.
Right.
There we go.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wall. And I'd like to say. Good evening to everyone. Welcome to the Safety and School Climate Committee meeting. This is the first one in 2021. And from, and the meeting will start from four to six P M. And the agenda has been prepared. And. We will actually do the roll call. Dr. Wall, will you do the roll call?
Absolutely, Trustee Christian. You are here and Trustee Smith Bolt.
Present.
All right, the board members are here.
Yes, thank you. And now we will proceed with approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You have second.
Oh, I say it. All right. On the paper, the agenda being approved.
Aye.
Aye. And we'll now we'll move to the next will be public comment.
And this is for anything not on the agenda because there is the ability for public comment on each of the discussion items as well.
Okay, cool.
All right, so I am looking and I do not see any hands at this moment for public comment.
Okay, and now we will proceed to the. Public comment session. See.
So no, no public comment, so we can move to discussion items.
Okay, so we go to discussion items. And that would be the committee, the vision and purpose, and that what I will present, the vision and purpose. The vision, the Board Safety and School Climate Committee is designed to be a safe space dedicated to review, discuss, understand and explore and learn about key safe schools, operations and school climate concepts. The committee will focus on best practices and procedures to help ensure the district students are served in a safe, secure and inclusive environment. And the purpose of the Board Safety and School Climate Committee is to review the safety and climate support and policies of the district. The Board Safety and School Climate Committee reviews such as the site and district safety plans, district safety audit, district climate work, labor contrast and financial impact. Is excluding closed session items. COVID-19 procedure, me process and procedures and other topics as needed or directed by the committee or board. The Safety School, the Safety School Climate Committee oversees the development and draft for substance abuse prevention intervention and abstention among elementary, middle and high school students. The Safety and School Climate Committee supports site based. It's site based implementation of positive behavior into vision support. Directive at improving students' connection to school. The climate will, I mean, the committee will make a recommendation to the board. The goals and objective, the goals, the goal of the Safety and School Climate Committee is to understand, understand and work to implement the best practices to create a welcoming environment, restore, build trust in our practice and policies. To develop board members that have a deep understanding of organizational structure and social emotional support system in place within the organization. Understand how to ask good questions about initiatives to enhance school climate. To educate internal and external shareholders about the importance of comprehensive, say, comprehensive, safe schools, plans and procedures. Presentation for people and bridge the gap between school and community, including local law enforcement. And that's the. Overall objective of where we are. And so now we will move to the. That would be what?
So are there any adjustments that yourself or Trustee Smith folds or amendments or changes to this that you want initially before we go on?
Are you trying to say shareholders on E or stakeholders?
That's a, it probably should be stakeholders, I think you're correct. I'll make that change right now. And this is obviously a work in progress, so it can always be.
And you said presentation for the people, F is presentations for the people. Tell me more, what do you, you mean just the slides and slide decks that you bring out during the open board meetings? Is that what we're talking about? What are we talking about?
I think so, I think the idea at least initially is that this committee would be another opportunity to make sure that there's open presentations about our policies, procedures, as it pertains to both safety and school climate throughout whatever becomes foremost on people's minds.
Okay. Oh, Trustee Christian, I think it looks good for now because it's, because it's a living document, I'm okay with it now going forward.
Okay.
Okay. So then you would want to ask public comment before we leave this item and go to the next.
Would there be any public comment to this particular, particular section of the agenda?
And I'm looking for hands and at this point I am not seeing any, so I am going to go back to the agenda.
Okay, and we go back and we will pick up with what letter B?
Correct.
Goals and objectives of the committee.
That's.
I think I covered it.
When did A and B?
Okay, so I covered that when I was reading. Okay. So that, so actually we'd be going to see as of now because I covered, but okay. Safety and emergency operation and, and I believe Michael Booker will give us the safety emergency operation.
So while he's doing that, do you have the PowerPoint to share, Mike?
Yes, but it won't allow me to share my screen.
All right, I'll, I'll drive you if you can.
Okay, I have it now.
Okay, perfect.
Trustee Christian, before we move on, would Mr. Booker, please tell us who he is, so everyone will know who he is?
Yes. You on the show, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Trustee Christian and Trustee Smith Bolt. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to present to you today about the safety department, in particular the safety and emergency operations overview. A little bit of my background, I am currently, I am the safety coordinator, safety and emergency preparedness coordinator for the West Contra Costa Unified School District. I've been in this position for about three years. And prior to that, I spent twenty nine glorious years with the Richmond Police Department. I retired as a commander and I was the commander, lieutenant commander over criminal investigations in the Family Services Division. In that time, I worked throughout those years, I worked hand in hand with the school district to include management of the school resource officers and assisted with a lot of the training for the C S Os. I have training in the areas of emergency preparedness as well as training in the area of threat assessment and CEP Ted, which is crime prevention through environmental design training. So that's my role with the school district. So I'm going to get started here. And today we're going to, like I said, we're going to talk about safety and emergency preparedness operations. And what we're going to talk about is the scope of work. So this is what in normal times we would be doing in a normal environment. So it, in some areas it covers COVID, but a lot of this is what we would be doing pre-COVID. And part of our work is to ensure compliance with state and federal regulations. So part of my job and the job of the safety department is to make sure that we adhere to all state and federal mandates and regulations. And then it, we also make sure that we coordinate our efforts with all public safety agencies. That includes police and fire as well as FEMA, Red Cross and those agencies. We also coordinate our efforts with the community based organizations in the city or in the cities. We develop district level emergency operation plans. As well as developing site level templates for each site, so they understand the basic operations, emergency operations for our district. We also update our district wide maps to make sure that we are putting in the most accurate information for our safety plans. And then we update our district wide safety protocols. And because this is ongoing, we update them on a yearly basis as well as throughout the year. And then we develop district wide incident command system. So this is the system that we go by, it's a FEMA model. And this is the model that we use under NIMS. And we follow this for each site as well as the district. And then we develop training and exercise protocols, not only for the sites, but for our campus safety officers, which are under our safety umbrella. And we provide guidance on the emergency operation procedures, district wide implementation. So when we do this, we have a process for safety and emergency preparedness. So we took, we take six steps in order to achieve these goals. The first step is develop, to develop a planning team. And how we do that is we identify core members. And then we engage the community based organizations or CBOs and community members in this task. And step two, knowing the situation. So we identify threats and hazards at each of our sites. And then we conduct risk assessments throughout the years or throughout the year. I am the one responsible for that, but I also receive the help of the C S Os as well as the D P S Os, which are the disaster and safety preparedness officers. Step three, we develop goals and objectives. And we, we do that through operational priorities and we set goals for, for each of those. Step four, we plan development. So we develop and analyze our course of action and we identify resource, resources for whatever we need on a site or whatever we need throughout the district. And step five, we plan, prepare, review or and approve our process. So we write the plan, which is our safety plans for each site as well as the district. And then we review those plans. And then in the final stages, we approve and disseminate those plans, not only to the sites, but they should be. You know, going over with the, the site administrators as well as the community for each site. And then step six is the implementation and maintenance. So in this process, we train, like I said, we train the sites as well as the, the C S Os and the staff on those sites. We drill and exercise and then we review, revise and maintain as we go throughout the year. So some of the short term actions that we took or we have taken is that we update access control procedures. So one of the things that we look at is we look at best practices when we look at access control. And one of the best practices throughout the nation is to, to adhere to a one point of access policy. So this, when you say one point of access, people look at it and they go, so that means we can only come through one door? No, it just means that we limit the access to the campus. So normally what that means is that we try to have people coming out of one area of the campus. So I'll use Kennedy as an example. They have those multiple doors in the front, so that would be the one point of access. And we try to control that for a lot of different reasons to prevent people or intruders from coming in the campus and to prevent kids from going out on the campus and potentially being in harms way. And then we revised our assignment procedures, which this is ongoing. We are currently looking at a model where we're going to use a Q R code. And that is, that is forthcoming. And then we adhere to a lanyard and ID or procedure. So at the secondary level, which is our high school and middle schools, we require that the staff as well as the students were a lanyard with their I D at all times. At the elementary school level, we were required that all staff were their lanyards and I Ds. And we make sure that the staff that are responsible for those kids know who is supposed to be in their classrooms or on their campus. And then we enforce our closed campus policy. So as long as I've been involved in this district. They've had some form of closed campus policy. We currently have a policy that doesn't allow our students to go off campus during school hours. And it, and it doesn't allow for people just to come on campus without signing in at the front office. So we normally enforce that. And in COVID, we, we are enforcing that in terms of people being on the campus. And then we look at an improved supervision procedure. So when we, when we talk about this, we look at C S O visibility. So one of the things that was brought to our attention by the community is like, they would like to see our C S Os more visible throughout the day. So we, we gave them training and we made that a mandate that they would be not only visible to the community, but visible to the staff and the student body at this, at the site. And then there also was some where the, the community wanted to see the C S Os get more training. So we gave them an enhanced training in areas that they thought that the C S Os needed that training in. And then we streamlined our administrative and C S O communication. One of the issues that we had in the past was that the C S Os felt that they didn't have enough communication with the admin and vice versa. So we, we streamlined that process. And then we also enhanced and streamlined the process of C S O. And when I say C S O, I mean campus safety officers with the students, making sure that they have a a line of communication with the students that is just not an adversarial communication. It's more of a, you know, them talking to the students on a daily basis, getting to know them, getting a better relationship with them. And then we update our safety plans on a, on a yearly basis. And then finally, we looked at enhancing internal and external communication. So we have a one call system where internally, if something goes on, it goes to all the people that need to be notified under a one call system. And, and some of those systems that we use are blackboard and also safety bulletins. So when you look at this slide, we have what is called a response continuum. So when you look at this, you have natural disasters, school shootings, medical emergencies, chemical spills, fire facility emergencies, public demonstration, fights on campus and bullying and school climate issues. So these are issues that may occur on a campus throughout the year. And we use what we call a continuum in terms of our response to that. And the response action is this, during an emergency, there are three primary responses. An evacuation, a lockdown and a shelter in place. I'll say that again. An evacuation, a lockdown and a shelter in place. Each response type should be viewed along the continuum that I just showed you on the previous slide. So you can use those three in any of those situations when they occur or if they occur. And we have levels on how we respond as a district to emergencies. So level one is basically a school emergency. So that's something that happens on a campus, a fight, some, something, you know, in regards to something that is considered minor that the school site can handle. That's level one. Level two is a district wide emergency where the district safety team and our district administrators may get involved. And then the level three is a community or county wide emergency. So what we've seen in the, in the past has been for, you know, wildfire, smoke or earthquake or something along those lines where other agencies get involved, whether that be public safety or the Red Cross. So phases of our emergency management. So this is a, a continuum that we use in preparing ourselves for an emergency. So the first part of that is the preparedness. What we do in terms of how we prepare our sites and our district for an emergency. And normally that's through policy and procedure and through training. And then what is our response when there is actually an emergency? What do we do and how do we respond and who responds to those given situations? And then there's a recovery stage where we look at, okay, what, what resources did we use? What do we actually need and what worked and what didn't work? And then we look at the prevention and mitigation. What can we do better moving forward? That can help us in, in a response to a safety event. So this is a will, it's continuous, and this is kind of how we deal with our emergency management systems. NIMS and I, SIMS components and I C S. So this is a course within itself. So I could talk about this for four or five hours. And actually the training is a four or five hour block. But NIMS is the National Incident Management System and SIMS is the State Emergency Management Systems. And I see, and components of I C S is the, like I said before, the incident command systems. So in this system, so NIMS and SIMS is the language that they use nationally. And I C S is the structure of what you should look like when, when you're dealing with an emergency event. So you know, when we talk about preparedness, I think I mentioned that already, is how do you prepare for an emergency situation? And then you look at the communication and information management. How do we communicate and how do we get out information and who manages that during an emergency and event? And then our resource management, what do we actually need in these events? You know, and, and what resources can we, we garner, whether it's, like I said, the Red Cross, the FEMA, you know, local agencies or even community based organizations. And then our command and management. So that's the I C S part of it, is how do we structure our sites in our district to have a command structure? So they know what they should be doing at any given time during an emergency. Because the biggest thing with an emergency is that a lot of times people are like, well, what do I do? You know, what's going on? So we make that in our safety plans where each person has a responsibility or a role for what's going on at their site. And it should be clearly explained to them prior to an emergency event. And then ongoing management and maintenance. And that's just basically making sure that we have continuous interaction or dialogue with regard to management and maintenance of an emergency event. The incident command system. So this is what I was talking about, this is the actual structure. So we do this at the, at the district level and we do this at the site level. And this is a this is a a model that is you know, it's buildable. So you can, you can use all of the boxes or use some of the boxes. And the, you know, the primary ones in this, this incident command system is obviously the incident commander, the operations chief, the planning chief, and most of the time the logistics chief. And all the other boxes can be filled in as needed. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that the P I O is important as well. So after action briefings and reports. So we use these as a way to, to capture critical informations and, and key lessons learned and recommendations for improvement. We also help identify what work and gaps and weaknesses and emergency management plans and responses. And then we conduct briefings at two levels. So we do them internally and so that's at the district and site level. And then we do them externally and that's for the community. So we can be transparent in how we handle emergency situations. And those briefings should take place shortly after an emergency response. And participants should include school staff, first responders and other key stakeholders. Next steps is simply, you know, what do we, what do we do, you know, completing emergency operations template and making sure that we go over everything that occurred during that emergency event. Evacuation procedures. So in our safety plans, we have an evacuation procedure for every site. So that's onsite location, which is a primary and secondary location on, on the site. And then offsite, there's a primary and secondary location as well. And then in our safety plans, we explain the span and control. If there is any issues, we, we explain what the span and control is during those evacuation periods. Like I said, we have maps that are included in our safety plans. And those maps not only include the internal part of the campus, but it also includes the external. And we have an aerial view of all of our campuses. As well as understand that the evacuation maps for the campuses are a requirement under state law. So those maps have to be not only be in the classroom, but they have to be in the hallways of each site. And those are for not only the staff and students, but they're also for public safety agencies that may have to come on campus and don't know where a particular area is. That would give them the ability to look at a map either where, but while being in the hallway or while being inside of a classroom or the front office. The other thing that we do is we look at assessment of supply. So you know, we restock emergency classroom kits. So the emergency classroom kits that cover, you know, flashlights, batteries, you know, P R, P R E's, you know, the, the dry food, water, stuff like that for all our secondary and emergency or our secondary and elementary. Water, stuff like that for all our secondary and emergency, our, our secondary and elementary school sites. And then we look at our inventory of emergency, uh, preparedness supplies. So every year we inventory what we have in our warehouse. And if needed, we orders, uh, the supplies as necessary. And then our communication efforts, whether it be a ra- radio or a telephone. Uh, you know, cellphone or hard line, we make sure that those are functional. Um, and that each site has the ability to have those. And who has them and where the numbers are, who, or who has what number. So we developed a, a drill calendar. Um, and it's an automated system for reporting drills. So how this system works is every time a site does a drill. They put in the information into a, uh, Google Doc. Uh, and once they submit that form, it is sent to a central repository, which is me. And, uh, I keep log of the drills, uh, for each site throughout the years. It's a state mandate that you have to keep a, a log of your drills for two years. Um, so that's why we have it at one location. So if, if there was a mishap at a site, we have a central repository where we could, we could, uh, pull it up. And then we make sure that the sites adhere to these drill, uh, these drill calendars. Because it is a requirement by the state that we do, uh, earthquake, fire. Uh, intruder drills on a yearly basis. And then we make sure that the CSO and staff know their roles in those drills because it's important. Uh, and it's vital for them to understand what's going on, uh, during those drills. So they can, uh, assure the students, uh, that they're going to be safe during any emergency situation. Finalizing our site plans. So when we do this, and I'll talk about this a little bit later when we go over, uh, the safety plans. But we have to adhere to due dates. Uh, March 1st is the deadline, uh, that the CDE requires that, uh, safety plans are done. Uh, we give our, our sites a due date prior to that. Uh, so we can get them in front of the subcommittee, uh, who can approve those site, uh, those, uh, site plans. And they get final approval from the school board. And then we review, so like I said, we review, uh, the, the comprehensive site safety plans. Uh, the, uh, the SSC, the school site councils review those plans. Um, as well as the, uh, police agencies. Um, and then the school board has the final approval of those plans. All staff, uh, should understand their roles. And then we solicit input from stakeholders. So that's community based organizations, uh, public safety, et cetera. And then because it is a living document, we, uh, peri- periodically review. And we revise if needed, uh, of the document. And then like I talked about a little bit earlier, we implemented training and drills. And how we did that is we go through, uh, Keenan Safe Schools Training. That is online training that, uh, everyone within the district gets throughout the year. Uh, and that is a requirement on a, on a yearly basis that everybody gets training with regard to safety. And then we do monthly training for the sites as well as the campus safety officers. And then we also ask for suggestions for training options. So not only do we ask that from the sites as well as the, the campus safety officers. But we also ask that from the community based organizations as well as the community. And then we review our drills and training protocols, uh, as necessary. So in summary, what we talked about in this slide presentation is. Effective response involves pre-planning with community partners. Proactive efforts in the prevention mitigation and preparedness phase will impact the quality of the response. So basically, if you're not prepared, you're going to get a poor response. Um, so we, we make sure that we fully understand that part of it. And then the response to emergencies were very depending upon the severity and the intensity of the level. So like in the earlier slides, we talked about levels one, two and three. And the response to emergency in- involves informed decision making and clear identification of lines of decision making authority. So that means knowing who the incident commander is, the operations chiefs, et cetera. And then during a response, there are three key response actions. And if I was doing this in front of a crowd, I'd say, and what were those three? Uh, responses, evacuation, lockdown and shelter in place. And after action briefings and reports are integral part of the emergency management continuum. So like I said, I'd like to thank, uh, thank the trustees for allowing me to give this presentation. Um, and I will, if you have any questions, uh, this is the time to ask them.
All right. Thank you. For the presentation and now we're opening up for, uh, public comment on.
You want to do questions first?
Yeah, we can do a question. Yeah, we can do questions.
Um, I have a question. May I, may I go ahead?
Yes.
Um, my question is the QR code that you talked about with the sign in procedure. Could you tell me a little bit more about that?
I'll jump into it. Um, we purchased a company called Facilitron for our, um, user fees. When we have, um, people coming in and they created a software where they'll be able to track every single person that enters our organization. Through a QR code, we'll post it at all of our doors. So that all of our employees will log in, they'll take a self-screening on their health questions. It'll let us know who was in the building at what time. Every day, if we have visitors down the line, they'll also be tracked so that when it comes to contact tracing. We'll be able to identify anybody and everybody that was on that campus in any given day. So that we should be able to quickly notify if there are issues with COVID where we need to connect with people. We've been slowly rolling it out. We piloted it at the FOC and at Vissel. And we're starting to put it at all of our campuses over the next two to three weeks.
Okay. And then the second thing is we have, um, you talked about, we have an actor shooter drill, we have a shelter in place drill, we have fire drills. Are we going to have a COVID outbreak drill? Like what happens when it? Like, you know what I'm talking about? Like what if a kid just goes, and like, you know, like, don't, like, stay away from the kid, let me, let me wipe it down, let me do. Like, is that training going to happen?
We're, we're going to have to do exactly that as, as we come back, there's going to be some conversations. About what about the kid that refuses to wear the mask? What about the adult that refuses to wear the mask and come in? How are you going to handle that situation? How do you deal with isolation when somebody starts to become symptomatic? How do you isolate them? What are your protocols for cleaning? We have many of those things already written down, but yes, we're going to have to as we start doing more movement towards in person. And even when we are back, there's still going to be until every single person's immunized and vaccinated. There's always going to be the chance that you're going to have to have protocols in place. So the answer is yes, we'll be working through, going through those protocols. And we'll have to probably bring back through this committee, some conversations about the discipline implications of COVID. Because you're going to have that kid that just thinks it's funny to fake sneeze.
And that's my, that was also my question about this, uh, the CSO training, like, are you have to train your CSOs? How do you break up a fight when two kids don't have a mask on? What does it look like when, you know what I mean? Like, what is that protocol going to look like? Are they just going to go in there like they used to do or is it going to be a different training? Is it a different way? Is it more, I'm going to talk to you and try to get you apart from each other or you know what I'm saying? So I'm glad that that's on people's radar about how we're going to have to have those trainings and how we keep everyone safe. Um, trustee Christian, that's all of my questions for now.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So now we go to public comment. Is it public comment or?
There is one person with their hand raised right now. So I'm going to go ahead and have, um, Veronica is the clock there. She's going to try to bring that up. I believe it is with one, um, it's your choice, one and a half or three minutes, trustee Christian.
Yes, that's good.
Okay. So the first one is, um, Veronica, can you bring up the clock? Okay. And it's going to be Sarah, let's see here, let me get, the first public comment is Sarah Butler. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. So I was just wondering in terms, and this is a comment and a question, however you want to handle it. I don't know if this is the right committee or the right place on the agenda. But since you were talking about school resource officers, I was curious, do they get, you know, in this day and age of all the racial issues going on? Do they get any special training, the school resource officers regarding how to not be racial profiling? Uh, et cetera, you know, in, or in terms of, um, you know what I mean? How to not be racial profiling and, cause we want to reduce the number of kids going eventually into juvenile hall. And all of that, and how are we handling all of that? I don't know how much of it the school resource officer addresses versus the administration. But I would think it would start with the school resource officer. And that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
So that ends our public comment at this point. And I, I think as we move forward, school resource officers and campus security officers. CSO versus SRO are two different classifications. The SROs are traditionally uniformed law enforcement that work for the cities. Whereas the campus security officers are non, um, licensed law enforcement. That are employees that work for the school district. We are doing some race and equity training for all employees this year. But that's not to answer the question that was asked there. It's more to say that we are indeed doing some race and equity training as we deal with our employees. And that was it for public comment is, so it would be discussion on this item from the trustees.
All right. Um. Um, trustee, Jamila Smith, do you have any comments?
Um, sorry, uh, with the. Sorry, my other thing went off now. Hold on. Hot mess. Sorry about that. Um, I think with the, eventually I think we do need to come back and talk about the SRO. Because what happened last year with the resolution and then being off campus. So we need to figure out what that looks like and this may be the committee to figure that out or what we're going to do with that. Um, I do like the idea that our CSOs, I know on our campuses, the ones that, when I used to work on campus. And the one that my children attend to, the CSO is the one that I introduced them to. You go to the CSO, you make sure this is the person that's going to protect you. This is the first line of defense. This is what happens if you have a problem. So I do like the fact that our CSOs are getting more of that relationship training to be able to deal one-on-one with students. And to make sure that they are com- they're building rapport with kids and the kids are comfortable with the CSOs and CSOs are comfortable with the kids. I do like that. And I also like the fact that you were talking about how the relationship with the admin is streamlined. Where they're actually having conversations with each other. Cause I think that leads, uh, safety, leads to better quality safety at our schools. So thank you for that. That's all for now, trustee Christian. Thank you.
Okay. No problem. Um, you know, I would just add to it is, is, is about on the school side, it's building the relationship. And making sure that everybody's in, in cohesiveness, working together. Um, and when something happens, everybody's on the same page and making sure the safety of our, uh, students. And safety of our staff and safety of everybody. Uh, so that's one thing we're going to be working on to make sure, um, that's, um, that we do a job. Uh, all right. All right. So we will proceed. So, um, Dr. Wall.
I am here. Sorry about that.
Okay. So, um, so we basically covered. A big major part of the, uh, agenda. So, um. So I, I know we mentioned the safety, well, the sort of safety plan as well.
Yeah, that's the next piece. Now we do have an update on the site safety plans. And so Mr. Booker is going to do another PowerPoint, this time to kind of show what the schools do. And we provided as one of the links, a copy of one of the templates. Because there are actual, um, configuration plans within the site plans. We don't post them publicly, only because it does talk about some of our logistical pieces and for a safety piece. We, we made them available to you as trustees to review. We work with law enforcement and Mr. Booker will go through the process. The bulk of them, all but about eight pages are fairly standard across. So we can kind of talk about the components of those that need to be reviewed and they have been reviewed by our staff. To make sure that they're complete, even in COVID, we still have to have a site plan. So I'm going to pass it back to Mr. Booker to share his screen, to go over the process that schools go through to create their plan. Because that first overview is what the district has to do to create pieces. And now we're going school specific.
And I will, um, share my screen. Can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, uh, what we're going to talk about is the comprehensive school site safety plan or give an overview for that. As many of you are aware, site safety plans are a requirement for each school district. They have to be done, uh, their requirement from the, the CDE, which is the Department of Education. Um, and they are, they, the site or the sites and the school districts are required to do them on a yearly basis. So what we're going to talk about today is our safety plans. So in our safety plans, we have, uh, basically 10 sections that we, we go by. Uh, like Dr. World said is, is that, um, although this document is 113 pages. There is actually only eight pages that the sites actually have to fill out. And the information in a lot of these areas, um. Are in the plans that we would show the community would be redacted. Um, because the CDE requires that any information that is, uh, of a tactical nature. Uh, has to be redacted from those safety plans. So in section one, it's an introduction, um, and it basically just talks about the concepts and I'll go over that. Um, in, in section two, it talks about concepts, uh, op- operations. Section three is the preparedness efforts. Section four, which is a section that the sites have to fill out is the emergency response roles. Section five is the emergency response actions. Section six is the emergency evacuation procedures. Section seven has to do with school climate, the school climate index. Section eight bullying, nine attendance. And section 10 is the school climate report. And so right here, we have a comprehensive school safety plans procedure. So in this, uh, procedure page, and I won't click on to it. Uh, but the procedure page basically lays out the purpose, which I'll explain in a minute. Uh, but the objectives as well, and then it gives the procedure for the principal, the district, uh, responsibility. Uh, the staff and the students' responsibility. So in section one is the overview. And like I said in the previous training, it's basically a FEMA model, which uses NIMS and ICS. So NIMS being the language, the national language that is spoken, so everybody can understand what's going on in those situations. And ICS is the structure of what we use for, in terms of chain of command. The purpose is, the purpose of the comprehensive school site safety plan is to provide a uniform template for school sites to respond and recover from an emergency disaster or an event resulting in the disruption of normal school operations. So basically, this plan is to make sure that if you do have an emergency, you can respond to it appropriately and then recover to the point where you can get back to normal operations. Section two, the concept operations. So the thing, like I said with NIMS, that you need to, is the bolded part, is it's a national approach. So this is the language. And I keep saying language, but this is what, at a national level, they understand. And other districts may use other forms, but this is the model that is used throughout the nation, and it's under the guidance of FEMA. And so it's a national approach, and it's the framework which gives emergency management response personnel a flexible but standardized system for emergency management and incident response activities. And then the incident command, like I said, that's the structure by which we, we go by at each site as well as the district. Also in section two, we talk about the ICS functions. So when we talk about incident command, you know, because I have a law enforcement background, it's easier for me to understand this. But we simplified in the plans, and we tell them what an incident commander is. So that's the leader. And it doesn't necessarily mean the principal. It's the person that has the most experience in that, in that area. So it may be a teacher that has the experience of leading in an incident command system that will be in charge of that. Normally, it's the principal, but it doesn't preclude somebody else from taking that role. And then the operations sections are the doers. Those are the ones that actually get the work done. And there's sections underneath the operations chief to include safety of, and security of campuses and students. And then the planning and intelligence section is the thinkers. And these are the people that look at the, what needs to, what resources they need, what needs to be done, et cetera. And then the logistics session is the getters. They're the ones that actually get it. So that would be like our procurement for the district. They're the person that would go out and get the resources that we need. And then finance and administration section are the collectors. And so that includes time collection, you know, fiscal collection, and all those things that are needed for aftermath or the after, after any emergency event. Section three, preparedness effort. This explains why teachers, staff, or anybody that works at a school is considered a disaster service worker. And I'll read this section. It's section 3100 of the California Government Code states that public employees are disaster service workers who are subject to disaster service activities assigned to them by their superiors or by law. So essentially, WCCUSD employees are designated as disaster service workers under this section to public school employees for cases in which a local emergency has been proclaimed, a state of emergency has been proclaimed, or a federal disaster declaration has been made. So when teachers and staff are saying that, well, why do I have to be part of this? This is the section that covers them in terms of them being an essential worker.
And I'm going to jump in, because this is one of the things that we try to make sure it's really clear right at the beginning of each school year, that God forbid there is a natural or other disaster. There is a possibility that we will not be able to leave our site, and we will need to stay to secure the site or the safety of our students, our families, our community until such time as we are released by either the incident commander or the FEMA oversight that takes over. And that's why that NIMS communication structure is so important, because we instantly go into a NIMS model. Everyone falls into their roles. All our employees are disaster workers at that point and cannot be released until the chain of command through NIMS allows that, for them to go home and take care of their own situation. And it's actually a violation of law to abandon your role. So it's very important that all of our employees understand that these trainings are extremely important to know your role, because we are obligated to stay on the job during a disaster.
Thank you, Dr. World. You're absolutely correct. Section three also talks about the drills. So what I mentioned in the previous presentation was that each school site is responsible for conducting routine fire drills, earthquakes, and lockdowns, active shooters, et cetera. The principal or site manager are designated, shall keep a copy of each drill conducted on the emergency drill report, so on the appendix. But like I said, we have an automated system that they put it in a Google Doc and then submit it, and it comes automatically to me. Section four is the emergency response role. So when we talk about that, we talk about in the event of an emergency, school personnel must be aware and familiar with their emergency response roles and responsibility. Like Dr. World had said, that you have to understand what your role is. And school personnel emergency response roles are identified and described in your safety plan. And they're clearly identified. In those incidents involving localized emergencies, normal concerning one school, the site emergency response team are delineated in the West Contra Costa Unified School Emergency Response Plan will be activated. So basically, what Dr. World was saying is that once there, there is a proclaimed emergency and the incident commander activates ICS under the NIMS model, then you essentially are given your assignments by the incident commander or one of the chiefs of, depending on what section it is. And this is the org chart or the command structure. And I think I showed you this earlier, but basically you would fill in a slot on one of these boxes.
And so we have the same situation at the district level. So we have our incident commander, we have our finance chief, our logistics chief, our plannings chief, operations. Each of us on cabinet has a different role. We all roll up to a single voice. The most important thing when you're dealing with an emergency is that you don't want to have 15 voices telling everybody what to do. You have to speak with that common vocabulary. In COVID, it's been hard, because we're sort of out of practice. As we come back, this is going to be an area, especially with the amount of social emotional impact that all of our folks have been under. There's a lot of stress coming back too, that we're going to have to be prepared and revisit all of these models to make sure that everyone knows their roles as they come back, because we're about a year out of practice, assuming we had done a drill right before we went out.
So section five is the emergency response action. So this is our notification procedure. And without going into great detail, basically this tells who the principal should be contacting, and then who those people that have been contacted by the principal should be contacting to eventually include union partners or any community bus or organization as we see necessary. And then there's a recovery stage. So at the, you know, earliest possible convenience, the principal will share a written summary of the event. And basically, you want to do it as soon as possible, because you want to be able to garner as much information in a short period of time so people can know and get the information out. Because one of the things that you want to be is you want to be transparent in your response. You don't want people, whether it's the media, whether it's people in the community coming to you and go, well, what's going on? What, why are you doing this? This, this is why we, we have a recovery stage, and we get the information out as best we can in the shortest period of time. And then eventually, we'll get to the debrief stage, where we will sit down, one of the operations directors, myself, and the principal will sit down and go over what transpired during that event, and look at ways to where we can improve, look at what we did well, and then put that and formalize that in a document. Section five also covers the, the procedures for shelter in place, fire, earthquake, gas leak, and our COVID response. So that's also in section five. Section six is our emergency evacuation procedures. And so like I said earlier, the evacuation procedures are for on-campus and off-campus. And on-campus locations, school officials should review their school site layout and determine where the safest outdoor location is on the campus and assemble the student and staff. It is important to ensure that there is adequate space for the entire school population and that there is no danger of falling debris, debris or power lines. If we were in school now under, under COVID, we would make allowances for, you know, social distancing, making sure that everybody had the proper PPE and putting them in, in areas that were big enough to handle a crowd of that size. And then the off-campus locations. So an off-campus location is needed when you have to evacuate the premises. And so normally, that's in a situation like an active shooter or a gas leak or something that's going to do some real damage to the site. And you can't maintain the integrity of your, your on-campus evacuation point. So those sites are picked based on a lot of different information, but normally it's the, the closest school site or somewhere where they can support the entire student body and staff. And so when you're selecting a location, like I said, you, you need to, it needs to be a safe distance from the, the building, preferably 150 to 200 yards. You don't want to be close to the site if you're evacuating off-campus. So that may require transportation. So somebody would be in charge of that, you know, calling the transportation to make sure it gets there, make sure people are getting on those buses once they get there. And then, you know, try to avoid channeling those who are evacuated in confined areas. The one thing you don't want to do is you don't want to send everybody to one area, because if you have to do what we call a reverse evacuation, where you have to go back to the site, you don't want it being a situation where people are getting trampled. And in a situation, for example, an active shooter, where you had to make a complete pivot, you don't want people crushing each other or running into areas where they can't get out of. So that's why you want to make sure that you have enough space and area to support your host staff and students. The thing you have to consider is, you know, development impaired and the, you know, special needs and mobility issues that may have. So we have to make sure that our sites all have striker chairs, and they have people that are trained with moving those people, whether it's on-site or off-site. And, and then you have to have a way to account for those people. And that's why you have somebody in charge of that. And that person would be responsible for, you know, recovering rosters and talking to the students that are talking to the, the teachers that are responsible for their students. Section six also has our maps. So like I said, we have on-campus maps, and we have what we call Skyhawk Aerial. That Skyhawk is the company that we use, but they're aerial maps that show the location of the site. But it also gives us, you know, where the site is, what, what's in that site, where it's located on the campus, like you can see in this, this drawing that's on this presentation. Section seven is the school climate index. And this has to do with positive school climate. And this actually is in the parent-student handbook. And it's also was in our, our discipline matrix for the, the district. And, and I'll just go over each point quickly. Students shall be expected to exhibit appropriate conduct. All students or staff are expected to serve a role model for students by demonstrating positive professional attitudes and respect towards each student and other staff members. The district curriculum shall include age-appropriate character education, which includes but is not limited to the principles of equity, human dignity, mutual respect, fairness, honesty, and citizenship. The superintendent or designated must develop other strategies to enhance students' feeling of connection with the schools. The school shall promote nonviolent conflict resolution techniques to encourage attitudes and behaviors that foster harmonious relationships. And then finally, all district staff shall receive professional development to sustain a positive school climate. I've always said that two things that affect a campus, safety and climate. So if you don't, if you don't have a positive, if it's not positive in both those areas, you're probably going to have issues with that campus. And then section eight is, is talks about bullying, harassment, and discrimination. And so these are sections that the CDE require that we have in our safety plans. And so basically, this goes over the philosophy goals and objectives. It also talks about the uniform complaint procedure and abort policies with regard to community relations, and also non-discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying of students and hate motivated behavior. And these are our board policies that we currently have. Section nine talks about school attendance. And it talks about the student's responsibility and attendance, the parent and our guardian's responsibility, and the administrator's responsibility. It also shows our tardy, our tardy policy and our addressing uniform policy, which a lot of sites sometimes don't adhere to, but this is a policy that we not only have, but it's also in our safety plan. And then our lanyard policy, which I talked about a little bit earlier. And then finally, section 10, which is the school climate report. So we have a link that if you go to the California dashboard, you can get all the information that you need to know about any site within our district. Unfortunately, this year, because of COVID, there wasn't a lot of information other than basic demographics for a school that you could garner from the, the dashboard. But normally, that report would be attached to the school site plans. And so when we finalize the site safety plan, so this year, our, our due date was January 22 of 2021. And we made sure that we adhere to those due dates and that these That these sites completed the declaration page. So if you look on the right, uh, side of the, the, uh, screen. Um, there's a declaration page that. Where the asterisks are, th- those have to be signed. Those have to be signed. Those are mandatory signatures. Um, they also have law enforcement agency rep. That was a recommendation by the CDE, but it wasn't a requirement. But I will tell you that all of our, uh, schools are currently being reviewed by. Uh, the respective police agencies. So from Richmond to Hercules. Though they are looking at our sites and because of COVID, normally what would happen is the site. Would collaborate with the, uh, police agency. But because of COVID, um, I sent those, um, site plans to each agency for their review. And then, um, the. You should be reviewing and approving, uh, comprehensive. So like I said, the SSC. Uh, as well as, um, your staff should be, or should know what's in those, uh, safety plans. They shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a gotcha moment when, uh, somebody asks them about the safety plan. They should know, uh, the basic, uh, the basic information in the site plan. All sites should understand their roles, uh, which we touched on. Uh, and we should be soliciting input from stakeholders, so public safety, school site councils, uh, community-based organizations. And each site should make a copy of their, uh, comprehensive site safety plan and that should be stored on site. We get the, we get the information for the approval, but they should also be keeping a copy. Once we send it back to them after they have been approved. They should be have, uh, they should have a, a hard copy of their document on site. So if a police agency or fire agency needed to see it, they would have access to it. And then because this is a living document, uh, we have periodic review and revision if needed. So in conclusion, and this is actually in the site safety plan. Uh, the objective of the comprehensive site safety plans are as follows. Is to protect the safety and welfare of students, school staff and visitors. Provide a safe and coordinated response to emergencies. Protect the district's, uh, facilities and properties. Enable the district to restore normal conditions with minimal confusion in the shortest time possible. Provide for the interface and coordination between site and the district emergency operation center. Provide for the interface and conditioning, uh, condition. Between the district ELC and the city's operate, uh, city's operation centers. So basically that means any city that has their own, uh, emergency operation center, we would be coordinating with them. And then finally providing for the orderly conversion of pre-designated district sites to mass care sites. So we currently have, uh, our, we are renewing our, our MOU with the Red Cross. Uh, to use, uh, our facilities as mass car- casualty sites in the event. Of an emergency. Um, we have to have a MOU in place in order for them to do that.
So, um, I'll just kind of jump in that when you talk about site safety plans, it's kind of been an evolution. When we were kids, it was all about earthquakes, duck cover and hold and do your evacuation and that was the real focus. Then it's sort of evolved, um, Columbine and some of the things really changed the world and it became about. Safety, active shooter, the whole focus that we have to go. But now we're in a different world where the site safety plan really is about that school climate, about that connection. About feeling that this is a safe haven. Not only is it safe physically, but it's safe emotionally. For you to be connected. And so it's really become an evolution. And that's why this document is so long because it's so broad and inclusive. But it's really not a document. It's got to be about an attitude and a feeling. And I think that's one of our hopes with this committee is to amplify. The fact that this isn't just about earthquakes and fire drills anymore. This is about our comprehensive view of what matters for our kids. And what we want our culture to be. So. I, I wanted to kind of finish with that as you go into your questions and your discussion because hopefully. That's a direction we can take things as we move towards improving and approving these.
Alright, thank you. Thank you Booker and Dr. Wu, um, and. Uh, open up a comment for, uh, trustee. Jimin Smith falls.
So I do have a couple of questions. Um, I know that at the secondary level you'll have. And even at the elementary level, you'll have principals who are absent. They get called away to the principal meetings. So if something happens, there's a, uh. Uh, there, there must be a hierarchy. Like if the principal's gone, then they know the second person in line and then the third person unliking the government. If something happens to the president, okay, so that's already clear. They all know that. So they know how to move up and down that ladder if something.
That's why, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tony. So, so that's why it says our designate.
Okay. And then that's usually someone, so for example, if a principal's absent and you have a sub-principal in there or a sub-ad. It's not usually that person because they haven't went through the plan. It's usually someone who's already on campus who's been through the plan. Or do our sub-principals come in and look at that safety plan? Do they, is that part, you know, when you're a substitute teacher, you come in and the other, the, the classroom teachers left you substitute plans. They left you guidelines like this is where the kids are supposed to be sitting. This is what the lesson we're doing. Does that happen on the administrative end also?
So the, the best way to describe that is if you're talking a day-to-day absence. Then you go to what's called at the elementary and I'll use that where they have fewer administrators. They have what's called the teacher in charge. And so they have a teacher that is identified as when that administrator is off campus. They know the protocols. And so that would be the person that would take the step of incident commander at that moment. We tend to, if it's, we're at an off-campus meeting and something happens, we redeploy back to the campuses quickly. If you have a long-term situation where an administrator's out, they're ill or something. Then the expectation is that that sub-administrator is trained up to be that incident commander role. So it, it really is whether you're talking about a short term or a long term and then what training is there. And that's where. Our department is focused to make sure that they're prepared as well.
Okay, I have two more questions if that's okay, trustee Christian.
Yes, it's good.
The next question is January twenty twenty. January twenty twenty, a bunch of people came to the board and they talked about dress code policy. I know that because I was there. So, and then the old board said, no worries, we're going to take care of that. Has that ever come back across your desk?
It, it was starting some conversations through the governance committee, I believe, but it never got to the policy state. Um, Mr. Franco, Mr. Booker, did that go beyond that?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I know that they did, uh, bring that up during a board meeting, but I haven't heard anything since then.
Okay, so that didn't, so you guys froze on me. I thought it was me, but I was still moving and nobody else was. So I didn't hear all of it. So, um, it didn't come back across your desk. The dress code policy didn't come back across your desk. Okay. Do we have to agendize that or do we have to bring that back to you? Okay, so agendize that, okay.
Yeah, we could put that as a future topic for this committee.
Okay, and the last thing is, um, oh. Trustee Christian, that's a comment, not a question. Okay, I'm good with my questions.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll open this up for, um, public comment.
So I am looking for hands and I am seeing no hands. So we are back to discussion.
Right, we go back to discussion. So trustee Jamil Smith falls.
And you have become muted.
You're muted.
Ah, it's a hot mess. Okay, so my question is, or my discussion point is about the training that's going to be required for students. Because this is all going to be so new to them, even when it's how to evacuate a classroom. Because staying six feet apart but moving swiftly enough to where you're moving safe, safely out and how to. Because, you know, in elementary school, they were taught one way to evacuate. Now, coming back on campus, they're going to be have to be taught a whole different way to evacuate, a whole different way to line up for a fire drill. A whole different way to, you know, have markers. I know that at the elementary school my daughter used to attend to, they had lines. You know, miss so-and-so's class lines up on this line, miss, you know, Mr. So-and-so's class last up on this line, but you're close. You were supposed to be packed close together so the teacher could just boop, 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 boop and count you. Now you're supposed to be spread out. During, you know, the maintaining our social distancing. So I just think that I want to continue to, um. Continue to make sure that we keep practice and training and resources always at the forefront coming back because the kids aren't going to know. The only ones that are gonna, this is going to be normal to or new to or the kindergartners coming in. Everybody else has to be trained. From, you know, first graders coming back all the way up to our seniors coming back, they're going to have to be trained. And, um, also want to make sure that we understand that if we spread high schoolers apart, which we need to. We will have some runners. So we need to make sure that we have a lot of adult eyes spread out. Because you're, again, they're not tightly closed in line. Now we got to move them to a football field. Well, we could have had them at the softball field. Now we got to move all the way to the football field and spread them out more. That means they're going to be some, they're going to be some runners. And with the DSW, that's only during school hours, right? So like we're only, we're only disaster service workers during school hours. We're not disaster service work, or is it all the time?
Until you're released.
Yes.
You could be kept on that site after the school hours.
I mean, if I go up there for a band concert and something pops off. Am I now, boop, I'm in that role as a DSW or am I just a participant at the band concert? Does that make sense?
The best way to describe is if you are working in capacity. If you're on any capacity as an employee of the school district. You could be marshaled at that moment if you're on that site. Now, if you're a spectator at your son's, um, event at another district. No, you're not going to be called into action. But if you are under supervision at a night event for your school. And something were to happen, the expectation would be that you would marshal.
Okay.
Until such time as we can release because otherwise you would have pandemonium.
So trustee Smith folds. So for the example. Is when we had the chemical spill and we had to lock down Hercules in some of those schools. That was past school hours. And so they had to maintain, uh, where they were at until we lifted the, um. Uh, lockdown or the shelter in place.
Okay, that makes sense to me. It was just, it was, when you were talking about it, I was like, oh. I mean, naturally teachers will do it, you know, even if you're going to, you're, you're off duty, but you're coming back to a basketball game. Teachers are going to naturally step into that role. I just didn't know it was a law. So now it's just good to know that, you know. That is you're supposed to do it. It's not because not just out of the goodness of your heart and the love for your profession. But you are supposed to do it by law. You're supposed to be there.
Filling your responsibilities.
Right.
That's the important caveat that if you just happen to be driving by the school, no, you don't have to all of a sudden show up.
It's like the posse cuma totus law for law enforcement. Uh, a, a law enforcement officer could essentially deputize you to, to help them if needed.
I like that. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's it for me, trustee Christian.
Okay, thank you. And, um, so we covered. The safety plans and so now we go to, uh, item E. Safe schools for, uh, all, basically is that the review, Dr. Wu or?
So there's, it's, we're just going to do a quick overview of what's happening at the state level. We don't have a formal presentation for the trustees today because everything changes every five minutes with the governor. Technically, the initial proposal from the governor was everyone had to have plans and today. Uh, the legislature said we'll talk about it in two weeks. They keep going back and forth on what this means. Simply put, here's what has been proposed. There is a proposal that there would be some additional funding. As schools met criteria based on county and state health guidelines to where it might be safe to reopen. They need to post on their websites a safety plan. We've been building all of those pieces. We haven't posted a formal safety plan because we haven't gotten to that point. But all of the components of it are what Mr. Booker just talked about today. What is your protocol for students when they're on campus? What is your protocol for training? What are all your protocols for reporting? How do you do contact tracing? So it's all of those pieces have to be in an embedded plan. That needs to then be approved by the county public health and the state prior to any reopening. And you need to have that agreed upon with your local bargaining units. So tho- those are the criteria if you're working towards funding. We're still in process. We don't qualify for any reopening in our county. We're still purple. Um, fairly deep purple. We are not yet. Ready to transition to the red where that might even be a possibility. So we're doing all of the steps necessary to be prepared for when that transition comes and then work with the groups. So that's the other, the first piece. The second piece that's in there is there is criteria for testing. Of employees and potentially even students should you come back. And part of the reason nobody's moved is because everyone's trying to figure out who's going to pay for all that testing. Is it going to be the state? Is it going to be the federal government? Is it part of our proposition ninety-eight education money or is it separate? The argument is that if you're requiring testing, that is not academic instruction, that is not intervention, that is not books. That's great. State, you want us to do that, pay for it, but don't count it as part of the educational dollar you're giving us. That's for teaching and learning. And so that's part of the argument that's happening right now across the state and nation. Um, in addition, there's the debate on vaccinations. Um, we know that. School employees are in phase one B of priority. So the first priority was first responders. Then it was supposed to be school, but then it changed to those over seventy-five. Then those over sixty-five, then supposedly it's supposed to be school personnel and those in food services. Um, that, the issue is now you're getting to such a broad phase one B. That it's really phases two, three, four and five, all are getting combined. And so they're trying to get it configured. So we'll continue to follow the guidance. We are preparing for all eventualities. On Wednesday, we'll talk about how our facilities are getting ready. We've already identified contact tracing. We've already identified protocols as it pertains forward. The only thing we haven't done is finalized labor negotiations.
Okay, thank you. So that covers all the, those three areas.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's any public comment on that or questions first and then public comment.
Any comment, uh, trustees Smith falls?
I don't have any questions on that one. Thank you. Because we're not moving yet. We're planning to move, but we're not moving yet.
Correct. Everything is operationally in a planning stage and we're not. How can I say this the best way? We are doing things behind the scenes to be prepared and ready. But we are not jumping ahead and doing anything that isn't working with all of our stakeholders appropriately.
Alright, thank you. And unless we move to what, action item? Is any action?
What about public comment on that one, trustee Christian?
You said public comment on the.
What Dr. Wu just telling us about, is there any public comment for that one?
I do not see any hands from our folks at this point.
And I don't have any discussion points, uh, trustee Christian. So I'm.
Okay.
To move on if you are.
Yes, ready to move on. Uh, anything on the action item?
So we do have, and I hope that it's come up, did the schedule come up? Because I believe that is the next item.
Yes.
So we have a tentative schedule here listed on the screen.
Is that going to be shared with us, Dr. Wu?
Can you see it on the screen right now?
Yeah, I mean, is it going to be shared with us via email or?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we had sent it out already. I apologize.
They have, it's not your fault. You may have, I'm, I'm drowning in emails. So you probably did send it out, you got to go.
Okay, so yes, we will send it out upon adoption. We'll send it out, make sure it's posted on the district website. Okay, so yes, we will send it out upon adoption. We'll send it out, make sure it's posted on the district website. I do want to remind the public that the Zoom link we use this time is going to change. Because we had some configuration issues, so we're redoing the Zoom so that we have translation, we have everything set. But that'll be posted on each agenda. And as, once you adopt this, we'll start talking about what might be possible topics at certain times.
Okay. So we just put add, add to it?
Well, right now, the question we would be asking is, is this schedule acceptable? If so, then you would want to move and approve that, and then we can talk topics as well.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar.
I make a so move trustee Christian with the understanding that this is a living document also.
Yes.
And then so I'm going to say aye to that. So I, my, my vote is yes, to approve it as a living document.
Okay, so now we go to what, fill it in or?
So now you would go to item four, which is your next meeting date. And if there are any topics that you would like to discuss as per that meeting, the next meeting is going to be on March first.
Yes.
There, which is a Monday. I already wrote down dress code is something that I heard. And I heard what type of conversation might there be for students in the world of social distancing? There, what looks different from our normal protocols were two things I heard in conversation that you might want to see agendized.
Okay, and then also, um, it was also in the beginning part as well, it's like lanyards. That staff and students. You know, it must be a must, not just, I, I have my lanyard, but it's not visible. Just speaking from experience. Remembering how that there was a, you know, even, you know, most staff or still they had the lanyard, but it was never visible. So we, we always want to make sure that the lanyards are visible at all times during school day, you know, during school hours.
Okay, I have that as a potential topic for discussion as well. Anything else?
Trustees.
Always just making sure that we're coming back with like those scenarios and those examples. I think that it's, you know, teachers, teacher C S Os, we all know those like scenarios of what's going to happen, like what's going to happen when you get that parent on campus who refuses, they're coming in to check their kid out to school for the doctor, but they don't want to put the mask on. How do we make sure that you're, I'm sorry, you can't come into the office, or you can't come into the office, all of that stuff. Like there are things that if we're really seriously thinking about reopening and what school's going to look like post-COVID or COVID on campus, on campus COVID, we need to start working out those. We need to start working out those scenarios. Sorry, there's another meeting that's popping off at the same time. Sorry, it's a hot mess. I do appreciate trustee Christian that you're ending this one thirty minutes early, because that means that I can get to the other meeting, which is great. Nice protocol. I think that that's fantastic. But yeah, so I had to make sure I'm muted on one and talking on the other. But yes, I'm good. That's something that Dr. Wool and Mr. Booker. I just want to keep us talking and having some teachers come to these things and having like an elementary, having some admin come and start giving us some scenarios that we can walk through those real-life scenarios, I think would just make our plan stronger. And it will make the community understand that we're doing the due diligence of what campus will really look out like, not what we think it'll look like, but these real-time scenarios of what it will look like.
Yes.
God, we can work on putting something together when we do our agenda review. Trustee Christian, anything?
Yes, just, just to highlight, you know, along with trustee Jamila Smith Folds is you know, just going back to the parent, and this is just from experience that you have parents came onto the campus and basically they didn't go to the front office. They went straight to the classroom, basically in a threatening way of threatening the teacher and so forth and stuff like that. We just need to really look at, you know, making sure that any parent, they, they got to come to the office, but we just want to make sure the safety of, 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 you know, the teachers. Student, and so the overall picture of everything. So I spear, I spearheaded seeing that, so, so just bringing that to, to the forefront.
Okay, thank you. This wasn't an agendized item, so you should ask if there's any public comment.
Okay, is there any public comment for this item?
And I see none, but we followed the Brown Act correctly, so you can move to the last agenda item.
All right, the last gen item will be safety and climate committee next meeting.
Now we did that.
The first Monday in March.
Yep. And you can go to adjournment.
And we go to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for coming and being part of the climate school, climate safety committee meeting. And, and we're going to push forward and to work together to make great things happen for our whole district at large. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Adjourned at five thirty-six.